Welcome to the November 20th Design Review Board meeting. Chris, can I start with oral call?
Board member Holsher?
Here.
Board member Kim?
Here.
Board member O'Dorsio? Board or Vice Chair Rosner?
Here.
And Chair Chong is absent.
Great. Now we'll move on to oral communications. This is the time of the meeting where if anyone would like to address the board on a matter that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak at this time? Anyone in the room? Is there anyone in Zoom with their hand raised?
There are no. Let me see, there is one hand raised. And just to clarify for the person that is on Zoom, is this regarding an item not on the agenda tonight? I'm gonna allow you to speak.
Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm not sure if this is on the agenda, but I'm speaking on the matter of 705 Hawthorne.
That will be on the agenda. That's public hearing number two. So you'll have time to address the board and the public when page number two is on.
Thank you, Chair Rosner.
Thanks. Anyone else on Zoom? Great, we'll move on to staff briefing if there is one to this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rosner. Neil Toft, Interim Planning Director, and just did want to report that at last evening's city council meeting, the council did conduct a first reading on the update to the building code. The town adopts every three years, the state puts out a new building code. This year is the 2025 building code, and we're in the process of adopting that code by reference. We do carry over many local amendments to the building code to include heightened review of items that are often exempted under the code. So there are some special tweaks that the town does employ. And in addition to that, we have also adopted some revised standards based on the adopting the Calgary, 2025 Calgary Tier One with a flex path for single-family dwelling additions of 500 square feet or greater. And as well, adoption of the energy code with requirements for EV readiness for projects which include any sort of panel, change out of electric panels. So a few items that are sort of upping the game within the confines of the state laws that are kind of regulating the degree to which local agencies can impose new standards, whether it's building and/or electrification. But just want to let you know that is, it's the first reading we anticipate adoption at the next meeting on December 3rd.
Does this go into effect on January 1st?
It'll actually go into effect on January 3rd. We do not open for business until January 5th, so. The, just as a side note on that, it's always interesting because of the release of the code and some of the timing with the recent adoptions we did for updating the energy codes in, under the 2022 to get some items adopted before, under, should I say, under the timelines of some state legislation. We had adopted some changes to the 2022 code for the Calgary Plex Path then and, and the energy code as well. So those were, those were recent adoptions and it was all a matter of getting those approved through the California, the state Codes Council as well as the California Energy Commission, getting those approvals in line to make sure what we're adopting for 2025 is fully legal and meets the state requirements. So it was a, it was a crunchy timeline.
If a project is in design review, ostensibly they've already submitted for a building permit, so they'd be grandfathered under the previous code regime?
Being in design review does not grandfather you for the prior code. If you've applied for a permit, you can be grandfathered. But as for a building permit, that is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, we will look to adopt the minutes from our prior meeting, which was, I thought I had minutes with me. Most recent meeting. Is, does anyone have anything that they'd like to change for the minutes or is there a motion?
I move to adopt the November 6th, 2025 meetings as drafted.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? The motion passes four to zero to one absent. We'll now move on to our first public item of the agenda, which is page one, 759 Tiburon Boulevard. If the applicant would like to come up and sit at the microphone, they'll have 20 minutes, after which members of the public will have three minutes to adjust the board.
Hi, good evening. My name's Rich Viola. I'm here with my wife Emily. We have lived in Tiburon for 15 years, raised our kids here, through, went through all the Reed schools. We first lived in Del Mar and then we now live on what we call the backside in Paradise Cay. And we are excited to move back to the front side. And I've been working on this project at 759 for a while. It's a full acre property and honestly is way more work than I ever anticipated. It's a full transformation of the, of the acre lot. This is just, the first slide just shows a picture of the old house and you guys, we've been through design review on a couple of projects related to the house. So that was the old house. Here's what the new house looks like. We kept the same footprint and we enclosed a small area, a little over 200 square feet that was actually just an odd thing on the lower level. And so we basically turned the house into a true box, if you will. So you can see the house is actually near complete. We've been working on it for about 18 months. This was the original garage and we went through design review board and we put an ADU above the garage. That's how it looked. And this is what it looks like today. And we went through the, the proper channels and got that approved last June. No, sorry, a year ago, June, June 2024. We had to go through design review on the ADU because since we were putting it over a garage, it was above the 15 feet height limit. It was actually 20 feet. And so that's why we went through design reveal. The third piece of the project, and if you stop by the house, it's in the, it gets worse, it looks worse before it gets better phase, is the exterior transformation. So we went through design review as well for all the exterior parts of the property. We're adding retaining walls, replacing the pool, a new parking circle, all new landscaping, and then we're approved for a covered outdoor kitchen. So that's just like an aerial view of the property. And what we're focused on today is talking about the covered outdoor kitchen. So this just summarizes what we're asking of the design review board today. What we have approved currently is a covered open concept outdoor kitchen. It's 11 feet, six inches tall and is 470 square feet. And as we moved through this project, we just thought there were a lot of benefits to adding a bathroom and enclosing the space. So close to the water, so the longevity of the space and any furniture, anything you do with the space obviously increases significantly. It's dirty or it would keep it very clean. Because of how our drainage works, it goes right into the, into the bay. Actually, when we first bought the house, there were rats that were just had taken over the property. So enclosing it will help with rodents. And then of course, it helps with noise from Tiburon Boulevard. So the big question here that we're asking is to enclose the space and add a bathroom. And if you, if you stop by the property, you'll see that we put up story poles. The green story poles represented the currently approved covered outdoor kitchen. And then the standard poles represented the increase. So a little, a little deeper and then three feet wider. This just shows a render of the space from the poolhouse or the proposed poolhouse where you can see the permitting. Obviously, privacy is important to all homeowners in Tiburon. Both privacy as well as maintaining any views. So obviously, we're very mindful in the project to ensure that we weren't impeding on anyone's water views or some of the amazing Sausalito, Golden Gate Bridge views in our neighborhood. The approved plans and actually the permitted landscape plans have full landscaping, privacy landscaping all the way down the property line. This diagram just shows you, you can see the proposed poolhouse on the left. And you have plants all the way down the side, a couple of olive trees and then 22 pitasporum plants, which can grow very, very tall. So we're feeling really good about the privacy, both for our pool and as well as for our neighbors. You can't really see because the video is over there, but there's like a faint line of a tree that is an existing tree that you're going to see on a couple of the other slides, just for context. There is the existing tree, so you can see all the new, this is a view from, from the house to the fence line at 70, 757 Hawthorne, I think it is. So you can see all the privacy screening that is planned, laid out here in the renders. This work is already in process. And you could see if you stopped by the house. Here's, here's a picture of one up from 757 Hawthorne is 750 Hillary Drive. We trim the tree on the left for Dan Shanks a couple of times a year. And where I put the red box, you can see, you can see, if you look closer, you can see where the story poles are and where the red box is, is where I think the biggest impact of some of the privacy screening is going to occur. It's actually going to be beneficial for all properties. Because right now, where you see those white lines, those are pipes, that's actually right where the pool is going. So putting in that privacy screen is going, screening is going to be a benefit to everyone. So this is just a render of, of the poolhouse and the pool. And so in summary, I pulled together just some of the calculations that I think are relevant. Obviously, we're asking for an FAR exception of 738. Our lot coverage, we're allowed 30%. If this is approved, we'll head, it'll take us to 13.7. So we're below 50% of the allowed lot coverage. The height, we're allowed 15 and we have 11.116 approved for the outdoor kitchen and we're asking for the same height on the enclosed poolhouse. The width has increased about three feet. And then just for my own sanity, I created a summary of the FAR, of the FAR, just to wrap my head around, like how did, how did we, where do we, where were we and how did we get to this point? So the main home, as I mentioned, we had almost 300 incremental over what was allowed. The ADU, we were allowed 1,000. We went to 1,095 and that was honestly because we used the existing footprint of the garage as the design. And since we were going through design review anyway, we, we went from 1,000 to 95 because the porch in the front was just disproportionate to the living space. So we increased the living space and reduced the front porch and that took us to 1,095. The existing garage are allotted 600 and we're at 1312. So that actually is our biggest difference. And then lastly, as I mentioned, we're out of FAR, so poolhouse is zero. So we're asking for an exception for 738 square feet. Sorry, and then I think that, I think that's it. The last thing I would just say is when we first decided that we want to explore enclosing this poolhouse, we worked with the town, what were our options? And we found out that if we removed the, if we reduced, like if we made the refrigerator above the garage in the, in the ADU, if we reduced the refrigerator to an under counter and eliminated the range, all of a sudden that would be classified as an accessory structure, but not a dwelling. So then we could put an ADU anywhere we wanted. And then we wouldn't even have to go through design review. We'd probably have already built that and that thing would already be up. And when we were considering this option, we immediately negated it for three reasons. One, we felt that going down that path was really sort of working the system and working the ADU and felt like it was not in, in line with the intent of trying to get ADUs on properties and increase housing. So that was, that was the first one. The second one is we honestly, we don't need any more bedrooms. Like we really just wanted the poolhouse to be a space where you can entertain and have guests. And we did not need anything additional. We didn't need another kitchen, so we really didn't want to do that. And the last reason was that we feel that this is a reasonable request. And even though it's going to cost more because we could have built at the same time, we were building other things. We've got to go through design review, get approval from the board. Obviously, it's a longer process. You're opening it up for public comments and obviously you guys to decide, but we just felt like that was the right thing to do. So. And I did it in half the time.
Thanks very much. We will now open to the public if anyone, oh yeah, if anyone asks for staff questions.
Can we ask questions about the landscaping? The landscaping was approved in a previous permit. So you may add conditions on landscaping for screening purposes. But in terms of specific comments on the landscaping that's already been approved, that's not up for review at this time.
Are you just asking questions about the landscaping? What's been approved?
It could lead to ideas. But yeah, I mean, I'd like to ask the applicant about the landscaping, the pitasporum. What, what is the? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should have asked the board if they had any questions for you.
Back.
So about the pitasporum, what gallons sort of are you thinking? And in the renderings, what are you thinking of the height as planted? What's the intention?
The intention, most importantly, is so that people don't see us when we're hanging out at our pool. But in the renders, you can see, you don't even see the fence. I think the fence is six to eight feet. So our hope would be that it would go even taller than that. And our, our biggest concern honestly is the tree on the left is kind of our barometer of like, how tall could we go? Because that is the one we're constantly trimming to, to keep his water view. So if you look at that, the fence line is, I don't even know, 10 or 12 feet lower. So there's a lot of room for those things to grow pretty tall.
So the tree is like 18, 20 feet, then you're saying?
I mean, that sounds a little tall, but I would say in the 12 to 15 range.
Okay.
And I don't remember off the top of my head. I think they were five gallon.
Five gallon, okay. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. So Savannah, can you please confirm that the accessory unit or the dwelling is not in fact the ADU because it's larger than 1,000 feet and it's taller than 16 feet? So it's square footage, it required an FAE to pass, so the square footage counts toward the size of the dwelling?
That is correct.
Okay.
I just have a quick question. How tall is your, the fence on Tiburon Boulevard? And then is there any grade change as you go, like where the, the proposal is?
Yes. I want to say that the, there's a retaining wall behind the poolhouse and I feel like, I don't remember the, the height. I want to say maybe it's at the tallest point, six feet tall. And then it slopes down and all the drainage from down the hill then funnels and the connection is literally right in front of our house.
Okay.
To, to the, to the bay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
So if, if it isn't, so just to clarify, if it's not an accessory dwelling, you can have actually an accessory dwelling. They can still apply for an ADU.
You can have one detached accessory dwelling unit on one residentially zoned parcel.
And the one over the garage is not an ADU or it is?
It, it is a dwelling unit.
It is a dwelling unit, okay.
But it's not the ADU that you get that doesn't count toward the square footage because it's too big.
Got it.
Too tall.
Got it. Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so it counts as square footage.
Any other questions before we open to the public? Seeing none, if anyone in the room would like to address the board, you'll have three minutes. No one in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. With that, the applicant does have five minutes to address anything else, but you can yield your time.
I feel good.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. Would anyone like to kick us off?
I have no problem with the proposal. I, I, I do want to see if we can deal with the landscaping because I was on the other side looking in and I think it would benefit both, both the applicant and others, you know, just having a screening. And so I think a five gallon pitasporum might be a little small. Maybe we can go for something a little bit more mature that can get to, I don't know, like 10 feet. Because I think, I think it's, it is a big change. Having seen the evolution of that spot, it was very heavily vegetated and now it's, it's pretty barren, so. And I think, I think it would, it would, it would sort of appease a lot of angst.
From?
Concerns about the change. Yeah.
I do have an issue with the square footage. Yes, it was covered as a poolhouse with open sides. It grew quite a bit actually from around under 500 to over 700. It's already 2,000 square feet over allowable. And so we are approving something that is now almost 3,000 square, square feet over allowable. I know it's kind of semantics, but I, for me, I think it's kind of meaningful and a way to have this function the way they want it would be to create a kitchen, take the oven out of the other unit, downgrade that from an accessory unit because you're allowed two units total on a single-family parcel. So they've already got the two units, but the, the accessory, you know, unit is not an, it's not an ADU. So all of it's square footage counts. So I, to me, it seems kind of a logical move to shift it, downgrade that and make this a proper ADU and not have it count towards square footage and lot coverage. So that's, that's my response. I think the landscaping is good. I talked with the owner about that. You know, I, I agree that you want privacy and I think he, they want it too, so I have no issues with those.
I think that's a reasonable point. It does keep growing. It's a, a lot of these are personal decisions that it's almost too late to step back on. But I have a little bit concerned, the same thing, the overall square footage is a, is a concern. And I, I guess I try to understand at what, at what point do you not keep revising it? I definitely like the open vision of the kitchen better, but that's a personal choice and it doesn't change the current square footage much further. Concern, but I guess not a big enough concern to necessarily vote against.
Yeah. Can I add one more thing? I don't disagree with their desire to have the covered and enclosed. I don't disagree with that. I think where I'm getting stuck is not taking advantage of the California law to allow that square footage to count toward the ADU. I mean, from my point of view and what I do, you know, that, that, that's a way to accomplish the square footage without having it be this massive FAE, which just, that just doesn't seem right to me.
So. So. A couple of things. Understanding your perspective from your profession, I, I personally commend the applicant for how they went about. They, as you said, you could do this from a technical, technicality standpoint. It's not, we shouldn't get in a discussion over ADU policy here, but I, I, I think acknowledging that this is not an ADU and, and trying to go through the proper channels, I think is, is very honorable and I, I, I wouldn't want to shift the, you know, make a, what's the word? A precedent that folks shouldn't be doing that in our process. And for, for the FAR exception, I, I think it is different than a variance. The findings are different. I think it is really thinking through, hey, does this fit within, with the, the, in the neighborhood and, and within the property? This is a huge, this is a very, very unique property. It is an acre on Tiburon Boulevard. So I think we have to consider that. Where I have, and I, so I can actually get behind, I think the, the FAR exception. I did visit 757 Hawthorne. I don't know if anyone had as well.
Yeah.
The, the challenge is the height, the existing height was approved at 11.6. We are moving it and I know that, that it's still 11.6, but the impact, you're not looking two dimensional because of the angle of where 757 is. So you're actually adding quite a bit of volume when you add that three feet and keeping the height. And I think that it is, that's actually the, the impact that I'm most concerned with because it's quite a, a, a lot of mass added, which you wouldn't, if you're just looking at the, you know, what's approved, what's not, same height. It, it kind of masks that a little bit because of the angle of the, the uphill neighbors. It, it kind of masks that a little bit because of the angle of the, the uphill neighbors. So I would be okay with the square footage. And, and I think this kind of solves maybe the landscaping issue and the impact from Tiburon Boulevard is just like, let's reduce the height. Well, it's an eleven foot six pool house. Is that what is the downside of a ten foot pool house? Like, I know we're hesitant often to like reduce heights and things like this, but this, you know, I, I think that would that would minimize the impact, I think both from the street, which there is, there is. The impact of the, have you, have you been in that?
From my, my perspective, an impact, a negative impact is where you would have a view blockage. In this case, they would see it, but it's behind still a, a, a thing of shrubs. So it's kind of tucked under. So I don't see how, you see a roof, but you know what? If you put up screening, you're not going to see anybody again.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, I don't know.
Yeah, the thing about the eleven foot six is the ceiling is ten. And I will say that I don't think that any ceilings should be less than ten. Like the volume, the, especially it's pretty large now. So the interior volume being ten feet, I do think is significant in a good way. I mean, that's, that's kind of good space. And then you have the structure and then I think there's a little parapet on top or something like that. So.
It's, it's nine.
I'm sorry, the, the, the I don't think you, or you can, you take it solely, you have to take it solely from the interior ceiling. I think we've
Oh, completely.
Many that have, so I again, for me, it's just finding balance and we are granting an exception. We understand the the reasoning to enclose it. We understand, you know, I think it's just again, that balancing act that is our jobs that I think is, is appropriate. I mean, it, it is a very, again, I go back to this, it is a unique property. Like it is an acre, you want to, you know, I think there was a mention about compared to houses on Gil Martin and things like that. We do want to encourage development on this unique acre, but it is also on Tiburon Boulevard. So when you drive by, you, you like, there's a compound now on Tiburon Boulevard. So I think it's, it's trying to think thoughtfully about that. I worry about, let's just start screening up that and only get better as a solution. But this is just kind of where.
I'm actually convinced by your argument that should we, should we push for a giant change in a variant, I mean, in, in allowing for extra square footage? Or should we just push them to use the A D U thing? And I think I yeah, because it does set a precedent. It does set a precedent that we want things to get to, to push. But I mean, if, if we're use, if we're pushing the applicant to use the A D U laws, then let's push them. I mean, I, I think that's better that there is a channel for this versus setting a precedent that we can increase and increase and increase. I don't know, I, I, I'm actually convinced by that.
I mean, I, again, I'm not, I'm not against the structure. I'm not, it's a big property. I'm not against putting another structure there. But I do feel like the California law allows for this. And I think it makes sense to make some modifications and then have that fulfill the, the, you know, requirements of an A D U because the other one doesn't. So, yeah. It's something that went from not having square footage to having, having square footage. So yes, a little tweak, but on the paper, on the documents, on how it's considered in California, it went from no square footage to a significant amount. So.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to kind of clarify something is, is the and I don't want to like engage in debate, but the, the reality is that the applicants had received approval for, it is an A D U. The approval is for an A D U because A D Us are allowed, whether it's prescriptive under California law where it's really just California law provides a carve out exception that makes it a ministerial application. That's all that that exception does. But it, it doesn't really, it's not California law is not saying there is no floor area. It just says it can, you can add this much floor area. How you, how the local agency decides to combine that with other floor areas into the future for those lots is really up to that local agency. But it's really a, it's a exemption that prescribes that, a ministerial allowance for development as long as it meets a certain amount of floor area and certain setbacks and heights. Because this project was already exceeding height and they wanted to make it fit. They went through the channel of getting approval for an A D U that exceeded that by ninety-eight square feet, effectively erasing that benefit of a ministerial action. But none of this changes the amount of volume that's actually on the property. And in fact, they now have a a landscape plan that includes an outdoor kitchen, which is really a framed up structure with a roof that for all intents and purposes is not floor area because it's not fully enclosed. But it is creating a certain sense of volume. That's what they have approved. What's before you tonight is, are, are they, they're requesting to change that. And they're not requesting to change the nature of the A D U that they have approved. And I'm, I'll let, I could let them speak to whether they're interested in making some sort of exchange. What you're essentially saying is just transfer, transfer the floor area for the purpose of making the numbers seem better, but it's really not changing the reality of what the volumes are on the property.
And Steph, Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they were to do that, they would still have an F A R exception.
That's correct.
What's existing.
It wouldn't be much.
It wouldn't be a another approval for, for, yeah, I I, I'm not, like I said, I'm not opposed to the volume itself, like, you know, I can, but but I, one thing, Neil, so does that mean though, that all of the square footage of the A D U counts toward the house square footage though, because it was over? Is that correct?
Yes, it, it already did.
Yeah.
In some cases, a, some jurisdictions will consider that a freebie and not include that as a total. In other cases, it's in case of Tiburon, because it wasn't initially. And some, some jurisdictions, it'll, it's basically like a first come, first served. You can, you get that freebie as a ministerial process, but it still gets added into your overall square footage. Some, some agencies will exempt it both as a permit and into the future as a, as another matter of trying to incentivize A D U production. So it's, it's really a dealer's choice in terms of the local agency. All the state is prescribing is the opportunity for ministerial approval without any kind of exception or public hearing.
What I see now is there's already been a floor area exception and now we're going to expand it yet again in the same project. That versus pushing the applicant to use what's already in the law to do it. And I think it does set a precedent that somebody can do a project over four or five sort of design reviews, three, three to five design reviews and get, and incrementally get more and more and more exceptions. So that's the choice. I mean, I, I see how you put it and I could see that perspective. So if
That's setting a precedent to
That you can just come back, come back and just get another extra seven hundred, another extra seven hundred, another, you know, like how far can you go? Yeah.
Well, and, and again, I'd encourage the commission to look at the findings for the F A R exceptions. And, and really, the question at hand is, is enclosure, expansion and enclosure of this previously approved outdoor kitchen acceptable relative to those findings?
Well, then they could always.
Because if it's not, they, the, you know, you could deny it and then the applicant could go ahead and consider options from there.
I mean, I could just see, you know, in a couple of years, you, let's say we do deny it. And it's, it's a structure out, outdoor, unenclosed structure. At a couple of years, you just quietly just put in some windows and doors and I mean, it, it just could, I mean, I, I, I think it has to.
I mean, I, I don't know what we're talking about. I can make the findings for the F A R exception. My whole point is the, the actual volume changed with the, the change of, of the, the of, of the, if you look at the green story pole and the new story pole, because of the angle, it adds a lot of mass from an uphill neighbor's view that does introduce a much more impactful object, like lower the, try and offset that, right? You lower the height of the structure.
Then they disappear with foliage though that they.
It's tough because it's, it's, it's a, it's just, you're playing with fire a little bit when you start trying to like thread the needle with, you know, plantings and, and this where it's just like, again, in my perspective, I think we, we have allowed exceptions on this property. It's a unique property. We're trying to, I think, balance the applicant with existing neighbors. And I don't think it's unreasonable to say, hey, like pool house, let's, it can be a little bit shorter. I don't think it's going to materially change the utilization of it. What I have a problem is like trying to do some backdoor. You know, like thing which I, again, I commend the applicant for not going that route because I don't, I think that's a worse precedent to send. Again, we're on A D U politics, which should be on.
I I honestly don't see the impact to, to the above neighbor if, if it's screened. If it's screened, it doesn't matter what the volume is, to be honest. It's, it's so far away. Yeah, but you were at that angle, you were right there and the, and I, I was over here looking from the interior. I didn't see as much of an impact, like this is, this is what I saw, so it's right there.
Yeah, but when you're in there, it's, it's, the picture zooms it out, right?
No, but what I'm saying is that, 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 sorry. But there's, there's that shrubbery that's on the other side, so it's like somebody's backyard. I'm not, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm okay with the volume. I, I'm just I think what you said gave me pause, just how it could be done. Or do we want to set a precedent that it's okay to come back and keep on asking for incrementally more?
I don't disagree with that. But the solution, what you guys are suggesting is like, is, is yeah, I agree with you that like we want applications to be full when we review them and not do it piecemeal. And, and it is, it is hard to know, look, things in, you probably know better than anyone, things in projects change. We do want to try and keep it as minimal as possible with the, the piecemeal. I, I a hundred percent agree with that. The solution of like you can still get it with an A D U and do this is like completely
See, and, and, yeah, and to me it doesn't, that's not underhanded. It's utilizing the California code, you know, so that I have a different perspective on.
So here's another perspective. We do want more screening, I think.
Agrees.
We want more screening and we wouldn't have leverage if we deny it to ask for more screening. So there's a rub. Is it, if we deny it, we, we lose our ability to say, you know, provide more mature planting that, that does screen the, the whatever in exchange for an F A R exception.
Where, where are you screening it? Where are you suggesting screening, like along this?
Yep.
In between seven fifty-seven and seven fifty-nine?
All the way down that wall.
Which I think they already have, don't they, with the pitasporum?
Yeah.
It's not planted.
It's not planted and it was going to be five, it's going to be five gallon and it's going to be maybe five, five feet when planted. So maybe we get more mature, bigger gallons. And we can sort of push that as a potential condition if we do accept this. I think that would go a longer way than, than playing with the height and volume.
I mean, you, you keep saying that you are, are happy with the, the overall volume. And none of us, I think, like the, the mass overall, we'd like to see that tweaked, but we're not going to change that. So why don't you just do exactly that? Improve your blockage with foliage, improve some of your the areas that you have a problem with and approve the project.
I think that's, that's
That's, that's what I was, that's what I was suggesting, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what we should do.
If there's a motion, I mean.
I was just gonna add.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's just procedural, yeah.
Um, I'll try to make a motion to make the findings for the exception and add an additional condition that along, I don't even know what to call that. Is that the, the north, the north fencing to allow for a larger gallon pitasporum that, that when planted, initially planted, it's at ten feet.
Can, I, I'm sorry, we need a clarification here. Before you make, before you vote on a motion, it needs to be very clear. You're asking for the pitasporum that is already proposed, that is already shown on the plan to be a larger size. And currently it's identified as five gallon. And you have a size you would like to see planted in that.
When planted at least ten feet.
Ten gallons.
That's big.
Ten feet?
That's a thirty-six inch box.
That's a thirty-six.
That's big.
So then twenty-four, twenty-four gallon.
And is this, are we referring to the already approved landscape plan or landscaping proposed as part of this application? I'm sorry if I'm a little.
I'm adding as an additional condition to shield, not shield, but sort of contain or shield the volume in a way. So it's a way to mitigate the volume of that's being proposed.
And
The volume of the pool house.
Okay, we understand you're looking to mitigate the volume, but in terms of the specific enforceable condition that we're looking for, it's to have them plant instead of five gallon to plant. Are we talking a larger gallon or do you want a minimum size?
Can I just quickly clarify, is this for the already approved landscape plan? So you're trying to change the landscape plan or are you adding additional conditions? Because that landscape plan is, is not before us, right? So you have the pool house, which is before you, you can add conditions to mitigate that impact. But I wouldn't amend an already approved plan.
So it's to mitigate the impact of the pool house?
Okay, so it's an additional condition as part of this approval?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not doing any instead of five, you know, instead of this or that, just so draft kind of the condition with that in mind.
I, I, I don't know, I, I defer to you, Phoebe, like twenty-four, twenty-four gallon.
Twenty, I think of twenty-four inch box, but it sounds like we can't modify what was already approved without getting sort of murky. So perhaps we would
But you can condition that they line the
So that they condition with the net effect of a twenty-four inch gallon and they can do what they want with their
Yeah.
Previous approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can plant.
You know, come up, craft something.
So that we make a motion to and that we can make the findings for the exception on the F A R with an additional condition that along that north fence, we have a minimum twenty-four inch box of pitasporum or other sort of pitasporum.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they have.
Yeah. Yeah, along that, along that fencing for additional shielding. So the view and so that the, um, pool house um, visually isn't mitigated.
And every what?
It, it, the frequency looks pretty good. It's usually four feet on center, four to six feet on center.
I just think we can't refer to the other ones.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Four to feet, four to five, four to six feet on center, so O C. And that this is a categorically exempt from sequoia. That's my attempt at a motion.
Okay.
Is there someone who would want to second it?
There's a quick question. You can't make it as simple as add more screening and let them.
No, we, we, we should.
Range to do that? Okay, then can you read that back to us?
We're gonna do that.
You've made a motion to include twenty-four inch box pitasporum along the north side of the property to screen the proposed pool structure from the neighbor. Um, with four through six, uh, inch spacing. Four to, four to, uh, six feet, um, on center.
And I'm sorry, did you say how many boxes you're supposed to add to this?
Um, they can decide it's four to six feet on center. So each, the, yeah, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, should we do a roll call?
Board member Kim?
Aye.
Board member O'Dorsey?
Aye.
Board member Holsher?
Nay.
Uh, vice chair Rosner?
No. You voted nay?
Yeah, I mean, I, you guys can vote yea, you know.
I've voted nay too, so.
Oh, uh-oh.
So then it fails.
Oh dear.
I'm, so it sounds like, I wasn't expecting that vote. Um, it, uh, where are we at? Your position again, so, so that, that motion fails, um.
I, I guess I, I was saying, I was not thrilled with the mass of the project and I agree that it has, and you go back over the history of it. There has been, that was my opening statement is, is how, at what point do you stop the growing of the, the castle, but, uh, but I would accept it. I think that, and, and as we picked it apart, everyone kept saying, we're happy with the volume. We don't like the mass, we'd like more screening. And I guess I thought that was, um, the line we were going on about how to achieve that. But if you have some other thoughts of how to appease that, but I think we're, we're basically tweaking the, the mass of it.
I don't think, I don't think Phoebe can be appeased. I think the, the question is you, like, do you want the massing to be as changed as well, right?
Your, um, was it your hesitation still the? Okay.
It's the square footage. It's all about, I don't have an issue with the volume. I don't have an issue with the placement. I have an issue with just the, the square footage, um, per code. That's all.
I mean, really, how they define that square footage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm stuck on that, but I, I am, I'm just.
That's fine. I, I think in, in the interest of time, this is one suggestion that I can make, cause this is where I'm at. I hesitate with the, I hesitate with just the blanket. Let's put screening up. I also kind of hesitate to some degree with like, let's just chop off eighteen inches, right? Like there's there's some, there's a balance on the impact and, I mean, I'd be in favor of like, I think the public and applicant has heard the board's thoughts, um, you know, eh, one way is to continue it and see if there's a, an agreement that around screening and height, you know, amongst the, the neighbors that they come back and, you know, either they've agreed, uh, in some, either maybe they don't change the height and they, uh, have agreed on a, a screening plan. Cause that was also our, our request in the objection letter is there needs to be screening, but as we know, screening is vague, right? And I think it is tricky in these situations. So that's one option is to continue it and hopefully when they come back, um, everyone's supportive or they come back as is and you know, you, we're gonna have to.
Can I ask staff something? I'm looking at this floor plan. There's a sauna in the back that's like a bump out and that's really tall. In the floor plan, it looks like it's being, um, sorry, in the site plan, it's being called that as pool equipment. So just want to understand if I'm like reading these drawings correctly. So there's a key plan on page eighteen of the PDF. And the previous page is page seventeen of the floor plan of the pool house. There's, um.
Oh, I'm, what, A, A what? A one-one?
Can't see it. It's, honey, I can't see it. Oh, A one-one, yep, A one-one. Uh, the key plan, A, one, A one-one, there is a sauna there. And then if you look at the elevation, which is number six, A one-one, it sort of bumps out. And if you look at the, um, the next page on yards and there's like another thing there. Um, I didn't notice that until right now, but it, I'm pretty sure that the, that the roof is actually covering. If you look at the roof plan, it's covering the entire thing. And then there's also like pool equipment. So not sure what's going on there. Do you guys know? So it's, it's more than just a three foot sort of change. It's, it's now a, a whole box plus three feet on one side and, and I thought it was.
If you go to A one, oh, the note for the pool equipment is actually outside of the interior.
Okay.
It's shown as a piece of equipment on the, in the nook in the corner of the two.
Okay, okay. So then the yards and key plan is not correct, but the A one-one is correct. So it's it's, it's adding that piece as well as lengthening the entire, the main volume in both directions. So we're adding three things now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Pool's here, right?
The pool is, um, that way.
Here.
Yeah, yeah. So now they're adding this.
Yeah.
And they're adding this and they're adding this back.
All right, this is the massing, I think.
I'm under five hundred, there's seven, something, four, eleven, yeah, thirty-eight.
So now you have an issue with the massing.
No, I just, I just didn't see it. It just slipped my mind and that slipped my eyes the initial time. Okay, so there, there is a compromise there. I can, I can see we, let's reduce the mass a little bit.
I don't, you know, how, how do you, how did you want to decrease the mass?
Suzanne, are you suggesting that we still potentially approve it tonight with the condition that the mass is decreased instead of continuing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. I, I don't think the height's gonna change anything. I think it's, I think it's amassing.
Cause you think to this part?
Yeah, it's just increasing things in both, in three directions, I mean, in two directions. And so it, it not only increased this wall backward, it increased this way and it added this extra bump out. So. You're, you're taking the picture from the balcony. You're not taking it from the interior. Yeah, so see all that shrubbery? So you're just looking into it. It's not gonna be, it's all gonna be shielded.
So Suzanne, are you suggesting that if they pull it further away from the property line? Decrease the mass that way, which is kind of what is affecting the neighbor.
I think you can plot uphill, there's a pool.
No, I, I, I'm just trying to, I'm ju- I'm just trying to play, I'm just trying to see if we can get Alex on board. If we just like cut off that, that appendage, could that, could that be a way? Or is that not sufficient enough?
I think that'd be worse than just lowering the, the height of eighteen inches.
I think that eighteen inch, uh.
It's such a small space, it height matters, but.
Height does matter and I think it's easier to screen if you were to like.
Yeah, and I think the applicant said it's already, it's nine feet, not ten. I, I thought it was ten. I don't know why there's nine, four, eleven, six, but, um,
on the second page.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's eleven, it's, it's a foot and a half of ceiling stuff, roof.
Yeah, there's a parapet.
Yeah, yeah, there.
It's not just a parapet, but it's just all the, all the structural, all the, yeah, the mechanical and stuff.
So, I mean.
So it's nine feet. It's not, where, do we have a section through it?
Yeah, right here, on A one-one.
Yeah, it's a nine foot ceiling.
So it's already a nine foot ceiling. So you're saying you can't trim two feet off of like, it's gonna massively change the, you can't cover the roof.
Yeah.
You can't, that'd be miserable, A dos.
No, 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 you keep the.
Oh, just, just shave it off the top.
Change the, the way the, the roof is.
Yeah, you, you can't really. But you can't do it a lot because you need slope for drainage and that actually adds up.
And also it's spanning, so you need that structure to hold up something. There's gonna be cavity with, filled with like insulation. It's gonna have all the waterproofing.
What are you looking to be for?
Uh, cause I think, I think we could just move on and it's, it's an easy, it's an easy solve. If, if we can get you on board somehow. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, I don't think that's convincible. I, I understand where, why she's gonna not, not.
I agree, I, I understand.
Yeah. So what can we do that you think would help? Would it be bringing in the three feet that they added on to the ends and?
I wouldn't see, th- this is where I, I wouldn't want to condition something on like, they may be sitting there saying, yeah, we, we could probably trim it down a foot, right? And they don't want to get rid of the sauna. So I, I don't, I don't believe that there's not room to play on the height. We've done it countless times where we've.
Bro. Want the applicant to solve your mass problem for you then, or?
It's their, it's their application. Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. And, and maybe, and maybe it's not. And maybe there's a compromise on the screening where it's actually worked out between.
I mean, I mean, this is a very simple structure and I, I would defer to Phoebe. Like you can't really cut too much of that cavity.
Yeah, but I'm also.
Six inches here and there, maybe.
No, it's almost nineteen feet across. Yeah, you need to.
You need that. You need a depth. You need the depth to go across that.
That's, that's a wide.
I agree. So I would defer to Phoebe. So like you're proposing to bring it down to eight feet. The interior's ceiling, basically, if you bring it down a foot. I don't think, or you bring down the mass and that one, the mass will bring down a little bit of the roof. I mean, if you bring in the, the.
But, but your resolution was to better define the square footage, not really to decrease the, cause I didn't hear you say anything about decreasing mass.
No.
No, I don't have an issue with that. I, I just have an issue with.
So just you have an issue with how we add up the square footage?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't have an issue with the mass or the, but, but just the screening of it.
Yeah, I just wanted it screened. I think that's, that's, that's the, um, that's the impact.
By.
Alex wants to lower.
Lowering it or taking, well, after, uh, really after just lowering the roof.
I, I think ultimately it comes down to screening and I'm saying, I don't, I, I think it is, it is okay for us to continue the, to continue the project and have the applicants come up with a better screening proposal or ha- you know, such that there's.
See.
We keep getting in these situations where we like try and.
But I defer to this, I defer to staff to figure out that this is a reasonable screen. I mean, this, the, it's the staff that's gonna determine whether or not. It looks.
That's for us.
No, they, we would put the condition, we put the condition and then they would assess, okay, that sort of meets the intent of what the board was saying. I don't know.
I, I would, I would actually may, if I may inter- interject, I would actually request that if, if there is an, if there, if screening is important, it may be a good idea to continue it. So the applicant can propose a very clear plan on how they would screen it. And that, that's something that you can judge because it, it, it's, screening is a subjective determination. We really like to get locked down on what is the enforceable condition. We can go out and see what's planted where that, what you prescribed is, you know, twenty-four gallons, four to six feet off. Twenty-four inch, uh, boxes, you know, things like that. Those are enforceable conditions. Um, otherwise we're kind of, we're back into the debate over what is a, you know, between neighbors as well.
No, I mean.
Best to get this.
For me, the massing's okay. I, I think the screening is a problem. For you, the massing's a problem and you want screening. For you, you want, uh, did you want both?
No.
Is that your recommendation?
As I said, I wasn't, I'm not thrilled with the mass, but if you, but reading the letters of other problems, I think you improve the screening and you and you approve it.
Okay, and then, I mean, you're okay with amassing, but it's, it's the, it's the, it's the, uh, how, how we get there is the issue. So I guess since we're at a deadma- at a deadlock, I, I don't know. We just continue it, I guess, which is unfortunate because it's, I think it's a waste, but time.
I don't think so, but.
Well, they're gonna continue on, but, and just come up with the screening plan? Is that what you want them to do?
Yeah, I, I would ask what, what is the purpose of the continuance? I think if you're gonna continue, there should be some direction to the applicant. If there is a motion, if there's a motion to approve, that doesn't pass, then that doesn't pass. If there's a motion to deny that doesn't pass, then that doesn't pass. And I'll kind of leave it to our attorney to, um, kind of apply on if there is, um, you know, ultimately a two-two vote is no action and that's, you know, there may be a point that it's not approved.
You want to make a motion to continue and see if.
And before, is there anything more about screening that would give the, uh, free people to agree on the screen? Or if, if you don't think that's the solution alone, then I guess not. But I'm just, before we leave, is there anything that could be, uh, modified of the motion that didn't pass that would make it pass?
I mean, I, I think what I lo- what I look for in, in these situations are, you know, I mean, if they're to come back, either they've solved it and all neighbor, you know, the, there is full support, right? That's like option, that's a great option A. Option B is like, there's, um, they're not aligned, but there's more detail on how the screening will, like, it should be, the screening plan should convince us that it has minimized the impact. It's hard for us to visualize that right now because there's, that was part of a separate thing, application. It wasn't in this application. We're now trying to condition it. And they may come back and say, hey, we physically cannot lower the, the height because of, you know, all the things you said. And like, this is the best way to screen. If we go too much higher, it's gonna start blocking views. And like, i- i- I, I do think there is some, I, I do think there are times where we have to ask the applicant to come back and, and prove some details so we get comfortable instead of us making kind of a.
I mean, I, I feel pretty, I don't know about you, Phoebe, but I feel pretty educated enough to like know that, like, uh, something four foot, four to six feet on center, that's about twenty-four inches. That's a pretty darn good screen.
It's, it's gonna be a pretty solid screen and I do think the difference, um, they've chosen pitasporum, which is a good screening bush. It's tight, it's grows tall. Um, they'd have to, you know, keep it trimmed at some point, I'm sure.
It's, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, it's.
But I think that, I think the difference Suzanne, between what you proposed and what they have in there now with the five gallon is speed. Is when they plant it, it will be denser than the little five gallon ones.
Yeah.
That that's just, yeah, that would.
And that's why, that's why I put that condition in there because I think it's better than what they have right now, so. I mean, I don't, I mean, sure, they can spend two months trying to figure out a better screening system, but I think the the intent, I think we have a pretty good and, I don't know. Anyway, if you wanna see something, you wanna see something, I'm okay to go move forward. I don't know if I.
I'm waiting to hear what we're going forward with. I still haven't heard.
The other, and another suggestion too, if they can, if they commit, if the board is interested, it sounds like there's an potentially an interest in continuing if you can't reach a decision. Would be, one is you can, you can open the public hearing and ask the applicant to, you've offered a lot of different perspectives on op alternatives relative to massing and screening, you could certainly hear from the applicant if there's anything is set or there's ideas in terms of coming back. If it is continued, you may have another board member available to help get a, you know, a quorum vote. Um, and that's fairness and fairness to the applicant. Um, so that's one suggestion unless you have some very clear, a a vote on a very clear direction.
Are we allowed to open to the public to address certain things?
Yes, if you open the public hearing, you just simply have to open it for other speakers as well, if 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 they wanna speak, but you can open it to ask the applicant. Um, ask questions or just respond to your sort of discussion to date, to the point.
So when you reopen it and you, you know, speak to the applicant, you should make a request, like, does anyone else wanna speak? And then it would just be, that would be.
I would be in favor and we can ask some questions directly.
Yes.
I would be in favor of that.
Alex, so you're you're you're, you still saying you need screening and you want a mass change, right? You want both. I just wanna understand what you where you are.
I would like to understand if that is possible and if not, why and take it from there.
Okay.
Mo- open, open back to the public, um.
You have to make a motion to mo- open it back up to the public, I think.
Is it? Motion to open back to the public to discuss the uh options that have been. What do I say? Uh specifically to talk about screening options um or lowering of the height of the structure um that may or may not have been discussed throughout this design process. And we will open it to the public.
Made a motion, you should probably vote on it, but I assume everyone, I mean, yeah, go for it.
Do we, can we do a roll call? Cause she might have.
You just do show hands.
Uh, we would invite the applicant up to uh answer some questions about um options that you have explored in the past around uh the the minimum height of the structure and the the screening details.
Yeah, um. We're, we're not going to reduce the height of the structure. Because if we're going to spend the money to build this, it needs to be consistent with the rest of the property. And so that's where we went with the, basically the minimum nine foot ceiling. You then need a uh another foot for structure and then you need another foot for sloping and then something called a para something six inches and that's how you get nine, ten, eleven, eleven, six. Um, the screening is something that I've noticed even from Tiburon Boulevard. I actually want more screening behind and in the corner of the building so that it and not because I need more privacy, cause the the building, it just doesn't look good from the street. You know, no one wants to stare at the back of a unit. So I think there's screening that we need to add that are currently not in the plan behind the building. And then I think all along the property line. I mean, I'm not a plant expert, but ten feet seems like that's gonna make a sizable impact for everyone involved. And then if you think back to that picture I showed you, cause we're nervous about Dan up on Hawthorne. No, he's on Hillary. Like, we we've got a ways to play there. So if you're starting with ten feet, I mean, it's better for us, it's better for everyone. I think I said that, like neighbors want privacy and you definitely want privacy around your pool. So I feel like the things that you're talking about are all things that we're like, yeah, we definitely need to be doing that. So you hadn't really talked too much about kind of the corner where I think it shows where the sauna, but we just removed part of the fence. And when you drive on Tiburon Boulevard, you're like, whoa. There is a structure going up there and I think we'd like to shield that, kind of for not our benefit, but really just for the benefit of the town.
Okay, any questions?
Uh, can you uh answer that more specifically? What what do you want to? What do you envision seeing as the uh the answer to that corner, for instance? Uh, ten feet or a vegetation or what do you, what works in your image of that corner?
Um, I, well, yeah, at least ten feet. Right? Because the building's eleven six, so if you kind of in that corner wanna shield that section. And I know from standing on the neighbors next to us in the the newly painted blue house, we just can't go too close to the edge of the property line or you start to impact their view.
It's the northwest corner?
Yes.
And that feeds into the northern uh border that we've been talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, it can't be a ten foot fence, but we're we're advocating for a ten foot piece of vegetation, cause we don't wanna get into the fencing variance.
No.
Is there any width that you've explored in, cause you're adding a three feet, was that? Was that, wh- what was the motivation behind that?
It was all working with the architect of maintain, taking that four seventy that had been approved at the cupboard kitchen and keeping that as the main space, so we sort of made a new rectangle and then we added the long bathroom on the end.
But it did look like it mainly was to complete a bathroom is what it looks like on the footprint, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Now, it it's enclosed and then it's a bathroom.
I mean, and the other thing I should say, I think you might have seen this in my communication with the homeowners at seven fifty-seven Hawthorne. But if you look at the landscaping plan, I don't know if we can pull it up, but there's only, even next to the mass that you're talking about, the longer there was just low plants. And so I suggested to them, let's also, in addition to what we're doing down the property line, let's also do longer plants or taller plants along the whole side of the structure. Uh, there you go. Thank you. That was so fast.
Coming up.
Oh, so at this point it works.
Sorry, it's just doing a little check thing.
But you can see, I think there are twenty-two plants and now we're talking about making those twenty-four inch box. Um, ten feet high, it's pretty significant screening.
No, it'll be ten feet high, I just said.
Pretty quick, yeah. But they grow pretty quickly, right? And then um where the red boxes, those are all low, like pretty pi- plants by the pool and I and I recommend it as you get closer to the pool house, let's shade that, which will help with the mass thought. And then on this corner here, we can move where the pool equipment's gonna go and add more plantings, basically a larger tree at the base and some more plantings behind it, which I think really benefit the view from Tiburon Boulevard of kind of shielding what uh this new structure.
So that's the old plan there, because that's missing sauna.
That, the the only thing that's missing is the sauna part out of the back. Actually, this is also wider. I wanna say that's actually eight hundred square feet, so it's just one big rectangle, so it's actually smaller, it's just configured a little differently. But all the plantings are accurate.
And so the location and. To be clear, when you're talking about additional plantings on the back to benefit Tiburon Boulevard, that what you're showing what you're seeing there behind the building is a fence, is a fence line and a break in the grade and then you actually have more room to the property line, so you're talking about additional planting beyond that fence to the left of the.
No, I'm talking on the inside of the retaining wall. Because by the, on the other side, the retaining wall is where all the um, the drainage, it's all rocks and it flows into the bed.
Okay.
You'll see.
And there's actually on there, there's huge trees in that section already.
Just so it's in that area.
That would have gone to here.
Yeah. I think so. It's confusing, took me a second, so yeah.
Okay, um. Anyone else have a question for the applicant on this matter? I'll give it to the public once he's.
Uh, there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Anyone in the room that wishes to address this? Alright, seen them, we'll bring it back to the board.
So it'll basically be like.
Yeah. Okay.
That's the goal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I can get on board with with that. I mean, I think really understanding the constraints on the height and the kitchen was approved, um. Seeing, I think what took me a little bit was there was only the green, the one story pole just on the one side, so kinda because there wasn't the similar on the other side from the angle, it enlarged and it enlarged the additional mass. And so I think the net, the net incremental i- impact uh from what staff had approved, I think is is um is is more apparent to me. So. Are we, we look for a motion, you made a motion to adopt the conditions. Um, you can't make the same motion, so just maybe tweak the center on center condition. To.
You're gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna get to make a motion to um accept uh, accept the um increase in the FAR with an additional condition that on the north, along the north fence that we plant pitasporum, five feet on center, five to six feet on center with twenty-four inch boxes. And that is categorically exempt from CEQA.
Is there, is that motion acceptable? Is there a second? Second.
Okay, um, second.
Uh, we'll do a roll call vote.
Board member Kim?
Aye.
Board member Dorceal?
Aye.
Board member Holsher?
Nay.
Vice Chair Rosner?
Aye. The motion passes three, two, one with one absent. Uh, thank you. We will move on to the next uh hearing. Um, would anyone on the board wanna back remember before we break? Okay, we'll take a five minute recess um or until we get to number two.
They haven't before getting the.
There you go. Ready to go? All right. Um, we will move on to page two, which is seven hundred Hawthorne Drive. Um, would the applicant please uh, come? You'll have twenty minutes.
Okay, they're gonna, they're gonna work the slides. I'm just talking. Hi, uh, my name's Eric. I'm the homeowner at seven hundred Hawthorne Drive. Uh, forgive me if I'm a little shaky and a little nervous. It's been a long process. Uh, we moved into the house in twenty twelve. It's a two bedroom house and uh, there's my wife and my two kids that have, I think, gotten taller while we've been here. And uh, so the two bedrooms doesn't really work for us and uh, and we, we, you know, love the neighborhood and love the spot and uh, you know, for many reasons have looked to initially look to try to potentially tear it down and well, let me back up. We bought it in twenty twelve, starting in around twenty twenty-one. We were at a point where we could start this process of trying to expand the house. Initial thought was maybe tear it down and build a whole new house. Um, went through various uh, designs with that, with architects and, you know, came to the realization of two realizations of one, it was just, it ended up too big and it was too costly and that was not feasible. So then we got to a point where we decided, okay, let's try and remodel it and went through many iterations of that. Um. You know, first, uh, actually submitted one iteration of that uh, to the town about oh, I don't know, two years ago now, a year and a half ago and kind of realized after it had been submitted that, you know, it was different than the plans now. We were trying to put part of the house up uh, about five feet, which we realized was really just kind of probably too obtrusive on the neighbors. Um, you know, throughout the whole process of this design, we've tried to be really cognizant of of our impact on the neighbors. Um, and it's, but we also need to remodel the house. We need to expand the house and it's not possible to do that with zero impact. Um. You know, we're, we're trying to uh, our, our ceilings right now are eight feet and we have a flat roof. We're the only house in the neighborhood with a flat roof and eight foot ceilings. I mean, every house in the neighborhood either has a peaked roof with probably a peak ceiling or, you know, ten foot ceilings inside. Two new houses recently both have uh, either nine and a half or ten foot ceilings. Um, and so we're trying to get some more volume and some more space so that, you know, we can live there comfortably. My wife and I both, both work from home as well. So there's, you know, a lot going on in the house and, you know, we're not trying to create any sort of palatial house. I think our our ending square footage is about twenty-six hundred fair, square feet, which I feel like is a good size for us. It's certainly not any sort of um, massive house. And we're very much trying to stick within the uh, flavor of what the house is now of kind of a California coastal shingle house. We, we like that style and that's the, the style that it's going to remain. Um, the, the increase of the uh, of the height in the, the living area, which is kind of on the Tiburon, uh, the Hawthorne, um, or sorry, Rock Hill and Tiburon Boulevard is on the back of the house. It's on that corner, the main, the living part of the house. That's where we're trying to uh, to raise the height of the roof to, you know, get higher ceilings there. We're keeping the bedrooms at the height where, where they are. I'd love to move, uh, you know, in an ideal world, we'd raise that height too. Uh, but I've kind of tied this to the solar panels. We have solar panels on our house right now and we would move the solar panels to the part of the house where the roof would remain currently at its current height. Um, and we've, you know, I've always tried to work with the neighbors. We put the solar panels up and, you know, one of my neighbors asked, you know, they, they put them at a height and you don't have to go through any design review or anything like that. And they had the back of the panels were at three feet. And, you know, I guess that's, you know, the most optimal height. And one of the neighbors said, hey, you know, would you mind lowering that a little bit? And I very much, you know, want to be neighborly. Said, sure, we'll, we'll lower that a foot. And if, you know, given up some efficiency on the panels uh, in that manner. But, you know, I, that's what you do as a neighbor, I think, to some degree. Um, and so, you know, now when we're trying to, to do this addition and, and create a house that is much more comfortable for us to live in and also I think just a much better uh, in addition to the neighborhood. Cause you know, the house we're in now, we, we love it. It's home, but it's built in nineteen fifty-four, I think. It's definitely worn out and it's certainly one of the uh, I wouldn't call it an eyesore, but you don't drive through the neighborhood and think that's a great house. Um. So yeah, I mean, I think that is uh, is mainly what I have to say. Like this has been a long process to this point. Uh, and uh, now I'm just really trying to get to the starting line. So I'll let you speak.
Hey, everyone. My, my name is Danny Lebowski. I'm the general manager of Green Bay. Our company is here in Marin and we helping Eric uh, the last couple of years already to help to design the project for him. Uh, we created a very short, but I think it's very important, a PowerPoint one. So I want to elaborate a little bit because Eric mentioned that he went back and forth with some designs. And me as a general manager, we work a lot in Marin and we deal with a lot of homeowners. And everybody want to build and max out whatever they can. And not a lot of times that you have homeowners that think so much about their neighbors. It, I don't see them that often at least. And after working for months on the design that you'll see in the middle, which is the previous self-occupation we created. So you guys can see the illustration between the previous, which is in the center and the new proposed. We, after we came with that design after months of planning and that was more probably ideal for the homeowner to enjoy from even a better home, he realized actually that it might go, gonna interrupt to the neighbors more than he will feel comfortable, obviously. So we decided to go completely to the drawing board and obviously cost us a lot of time and funds because nothing is free, obviously. But he was willing to go through all of that journey to try to accommodate as much as possible to minimize the blockage for the neighbors at the, I believe behind it also at seven oh five. And so I believe like for homeowners that do something like that and go the additional, not even extra mile. I believe it's like a, at least ten miles extra additional. I think it's something worthy that shows character and shows that he does want to improve. First of all, obviously for his family, but also you want to make sure that the neighbors stay happy as well as the process keep going. And I think it's not a lot to ask what Eric and his family is asking for. I think everybody want to improve their home. And definitely a house at their size, because I've been there many, many, many times. It's a little bit tricky to raise a full grown family. It is a little bit tricky. And I think with the, with the new design that we created with a lower elevation and especially if you'll see here on the bottom, on the third one, he moving those solar panels that Eric is mentioning, he's actually moving them towards, I don't know if to call it west right now, but to the left, I'll just to describe it to make it easy. That way it will help also the height we increasing is roughly where's the solar panel are right now. So in general, we don't really change the blockage because the solar panels are there already. So just by moving those, we just increasing the height for him to have a normal ten foot ceiling, which is, I think, uh, very appealing and very accommodating to any homeowner over here. And so we'll be very obviously happy to get it built for him. It's been a long journey. Uh, and I, if you have any questions, more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions?
What is the plate elevation and are you, are you keeping that plate elevation?
The, what, I'm sorry again.
The floor, the existing
Floor elevation same.
More is going to stay the same.
Yes, yes. We're just raising the, the area where the living room, kitchen area, which is the, the right side, the east side. That's the only section we're raising to create at least a mutual space for the gatherings to feel a little bit more open.
Yeah, can you help me understand a little bit why, wha- what is the problem with a six foot fence? We're three, nine and one year variances. I, I, I see the height difference, but wha- what's, what's the main advantage that you see with that?
Can I?
Yes.
Speak to that? Let's, it's right on the, we're right on the corner. Basically, we're on Tiburon Boulevard. The other is Hawthorne, but the house is on Tiburon Boulevard. So there's a matter of, of noise. There's also a matter of privacy because the, the yard kind of slopes down and so a six foot fence is already kind of low, but that low relative to privacy needs on Tiburon Boulevard. But also the house sits above the fence, so it's doubly bad. And it particularly slopes down to one corner. So we're not trying to put the whole, whole fence up to, up to nine feet. We have, it's really just that corner. We want it nine feet. And along Tiburon Boulevard, the fence basically goes flat and by the end of the fence, it's actually slightly below six feet, I think. And then along Rock Hill, you go to, you get to six feet and then you just slope up the hill at six feet. So it's really mainly just that corner that is um, you know, trying to add a little bit of extra privacy there.
Well, and that, and that's the fence that's been there ever since you purchased the home, right?
Yes, but uh, but sort of, it's been falling down and I've been kind of piecemealing it back together, but it's been there.
And the last question I had about that i- is the, the corner changes on that fence? That's what I was trying to understand.
No.
You, it's not squared off in any way. It's still a, a pointed
It doesn't even actually go, it doesn't even, it, it's angled. So it doesn't even go like to the property line. It actually angles and goes diagonally across the corner.
And there's no way to bring it closer to the home to gain some of that privacy?
Um. No, no, I mean, it's not a very big backyard.
I do have a question, um, I think more for the um, builder or architect. Um. I think in the staff report, it listed thirteen new skylights. Is that correct? And I don't see any skylights showing up on the site plan. You do have the dash skylights on the floor plan. Is that just a oversight or?
Yeah, they should also be on, on the roof plan as well.
Okay, yeah, the roof plan's on um, two eleven.
Maybe that's, okay, sorry, I was looking at the site plan. Okay. But there they are. Okay. Um. Does anybody want to offer um, some thoughts on why there are thirteen skylights proposed?
I can, I can offer some, some on that. Um, I don't know all the numbers, but part of it is it, you know, the house, the back of the house and the area on Tiburon Boulevard in the back of the house gets a lot of light. The other part of the house is kind of in a hill and there's just not a lot of light there. You can, there's windows there, but there's not, there's no, like you're up against the, the neighbor, you know, vegetation and the neighbors right there. So there's just not a lot of light in, you know, a whole one corner of the house and hallways.
Okay, and, and I saw that you have five bedrooms. Is the intention that two of those are being used as offices? Okay, and those offices have the skylights. I think there's one or two. Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Sorry, I, I missed before, um, the solar panels.
Mm-hmm.
They, they're remaining in this, this same location or?
No, they're gonna, well, some of them are going to be in the same location. Cause, you know, but the, none of them are going to go on that part of the roof that's going to go higher.
Okay.
So they're all going to be moved over onto the roof that's staying at the current height.
I see, okay. And then I didn't see, um, do you have a drawing where kind of the, the lot coverage of proposed is overlaid on existing? Like, are you, just trying to figure out where your um, if you're, if you're staring at it from Tiburon Boulevard, are you adding width to both sides or is it major, mostly becoming?
Well, the corner Tiburon Boulevard are going back a little bit towards Tiburon Boulevard, about six feet and then towards Rock Hill, about four feet.
Towards Rock Hill, four feet and back?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not, not the whole length of either one of those walls. Just about a fifteen foot section goes back six feet for a dining room on Tiburon Boulevard. And then about three quarters of the length of the house along Rock Hill comes out four feet to expand the kitchen.
Okay.
And then the rest of it's all kind of where the, currently there's a carport. That would be kind of where the other expansion is on the opposite corner of the property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so you are going to keep a, uh, the, the, the existing driveway and use it as a carport? I know it's not being used that way.
It's going to be a driveway. Yeah, it's, I mean, it wouldn't be a carport over it.
But it, it would just be a driveway to, to get the cars off the street. Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
I have one more question. Um. Do you know how many, about how many solar panels you need?
Well, need or have?
Yeah, or have, have or need?
I think it's about ten, I want to say. It's been a while since I've been up on
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
And I had one more question about that fence. Is there any safety issue with that of, I'm trying to get a feel if there's any blockage of uh, of seeing traffic from either, either, did you come around that corner?
No, I mean, there's no, there's no intersections on either of those. Uh, the intersections over here, that corner, there's no intersection in either direction. It's just, just lights and really there's already a giant hedge there anyway. So it's not gonna, the fence isn't really going to change any sightlines.
If. No, it's not. It's not this corner. But it was
It is that corner.
Well, yeah, but that's the street and that's the driveway, right?
No, that's Tiburon Boulevard. That's Rock Hill. And this is, this is the road and the lights. So the lights are here, the crosswalks over here. On this side, it's not on this corner. So.
But this, okay, this, that's a street and, and so is that.
Yeah, street.
But there's no intersections on either of those.
Yeah, no crosswalks.
Either direction there, yeah.
Okay.
Just want to confirm with Saf, the only anomaly is just that back corner fencing. That's it.
Uh, regarding if it's over six feet in height?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just that corner where it meets where it's
Inside, yeah, the inside corner. But other than that, like we're just doing a general review of the property because they're not asking for any other variances.
Correct. The propos, the additions comply with all developments, required development standards. And the only reason that there are two variances for the fence, even though it's kind of overlapping is one is in the rear yard setback and one's in the vis, the visual safety triangle, but it's basically that same little
It's the same child. Yeah, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions?
I do, and just the, the uh, number skylights and uphill, any concern of, I guess, light pollution? Is, does that affect some of the other homes uh, ups, uphill and do you have any plans to mask those at night or?
Um.
For the skylights?
I mean, I certainly could. I don't know. I mean, I, I would say the bigger light pollution issue is the tennis court across the street that has the strips of the fluorescent lights at BTC. Um. But uh, I mean, if we, yeah, if we put in shades, it's certainly not a problem.
May I make a quick clarification? Um, the code does require the um, when skylights are installed, that you're not able to install lights in the well of skylights or have lights directed up into the skylight. So if this was approved, that would be a standard condition that would be added.
Would you put lights up into a skylight? Okay, sorry.
Batman thing.
All right, uh, any other questions for the applicant? Otherwise, we can, uh, thank you. Um, we'll now open it to the public. Um. You'll have three minutes. Please uh, come to the microphone and uh, state your, your name and address would be helpful. Anyone like to kick off? Great.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, uh, my name is Cameron. Uh, we live at three Rock Hill. We are not behind, but diagonally behind the property and I know the family We are not behind, but diagonally behind the property. And I know the family, really nice family. We want to welcome them to build and renovate here. Uh, I think it's a good addition to our neighborhood. It would be an upgrade. Um, however, I do have one concern and that's the height elevate, you know, increase. Uh, you know, and I think we had Alex come to our house and, and see, you know, how that would impact us. You know, with the height increase. So I don't know if solutions or, or if there's been a look in, in different solutions to see how to keep the height. I don't mind the expansion. I think they need more rooms, you know, for their family, but that's, that's our question. So, you know, and, and we did the same thing. We did build our house. We went down in fact by half a foot, just, you know, so we don't obstruct our neighbors behind. I'm not asking for that. I, I don't want them to lower it. But I think being observant of, you know, what you take away from others and that's the primary view. Uh, and when the house in front of us was built, it was an architect. He came and we had people come from design review board and looked, they did not go over the height. Uh, that was existing and, and, you know, the maximum height and they, they stuck with that. So that's my only question. Is it, are there possibilities to, you know, maintain the height, but for them to be able to build, you know, and, and find a happy solution? Okay, that's, any questions for me?
No, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm Ryan Lee, uh, six nine nine Hawthorne, just moved in, uh, a month ago. Do I have to say something? Or, or you're about to tell me something? Um, I, I, I understand the dynamics of a growing family, need more space, make renovations, no problem. I'm just came here a little bit to hear their side of it, learn a little bit more about the process, just because I feel like I, we bought a place, we moved in last month and then all of a sudden I find out today about this. And I think one of the things that whether it's the height, it's more about the expansion towards the street. Um, I think there was a picture showing the fence. Can we, can I ask to put that up if possible? Though the one that you guys were showing earlier? Um, and then there was a picture from the path to, yes, this one. The, the, the only thing I wonder was just more of like having a conversation around the family meeting their goals of having more space, but at the same time not impacting others. And what I'm referring to, I guess, is that corner is gonna go up and then out a little bit on the wider side. And if you could actually in that picture, see the main window to our dining room and living room. It's just one space. Um, and so you, we already have being not on Tiburon Boulevard, a little bit behind it. We have a view, um, but this definitely does impact it. And it was just more of being neighborly, even though, sorry, this is the first time we were meeting and talking. Um, I, I was never like, never heard about this until uh, people came to the house to, to see for themselves. Um, so I guess my, my concern is you're going wider and then up a little bit and you can actually see it perfectly from this picture. That's our, like, our dining room, uh, dining and living room. Um, and so never had a conversation with the family, but this is more of just me expressing my concerns. And if there's any workarounds to one, get more space for the family, but whether it's going back and not wide or impact, just a way to, you know, work with everybody to see if there's a solution for everybody. Um, that's just my two cents. Um, any questions for me?
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna ask staff real quick. Are we able to ask any member of the public or just applicants questions? Are we able to ask any member of the public?
No, I, I just wanted to, could you clarify just a little bit more for me? What, what part of this, how, how this impacts your,
Oh, sorry.
Your view of specific, more specifically from?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I did want to see this, but I half hours.
Well, I can point, oh, great. Yeah, you, you know it.
The picture might, yeah, if you.
Well, I guess all I was trying to say is that like from the plans, from my understanding, you're going wider and then up, right? So this space is covered and you could actually just see directly at the house.
Yeah.
Um, and it's the main window that basically like our only view of
of the path or view or like bay, bay or Sausalito or whatever you want to call it.
Any other questions for the, the member of the public? Thank you. All right. Thanks very much. Anyone else in the room that wants to? Oh, please.
Yeah. Hi there. My name is Moshe Fagie, owner of seven oh five, Hutton Drive. And I wrote you a letter and also my daughter is on Zoom and she likes to talk to you guys.
We'll open to her after. Is there anything else you'd like to say or?
Pardon?
Is there anything? Is there anything else you'd like to say? We'll open it to the Zoom afterwards. Are you all finished?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else left in the room before we open to Zoom? Uh, okay. Well, uh, anyone on the Zoom?
Um, yes, I'm going to, um, allow her to speak. So it may take just a second.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
We are.
Hi, hi. My name is Dr. Shafagi. I'm daughter of Mel Shafagi and in the interest of time, we decided to consolidate, um, our point of view. So, um, I have lived in Tiburon my entire life and we bought this house over thirty-five years ago. So we have seen the neighborhood go through many changes and the previous owners were actually very dear friends and we were there, um, with them when they passed. Um, the beauty of Tiburon is for each person, the dynamic of, you know, the, and the characteristic that of their house. And that's what gives their house character. And for over thirty-five years, we have become accustomed to looking at the same view. And it is extremely important for us. And when, um, and I, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to be there in person, but unfortunately I couldn't move my clinic, um, to make it in time. But when I was there and I was looking with my family at the, um, difference in height of the roof, two feet from our perspective is an egregious amount. And while we opened Eric with open arms to the neighborhood, to our own family, um, again, as the first, um, person in, in tonight's, um, meeting said, he was extremely cognizant to make changes to his house with the intent first and foremost, not to infringe on his neighbor's views and level of comfort. And this certainly changes things for us. In addition, um, already as it is, those solar panels, although my understanding is they don't need to go through, um, design review, but they are already significantly impacting our view. And the, and, and the only saving grace is you can see sort of in between like where the panel actually is and then the stilts. So it, it's an eyesore, but you can still see where the water is through the panel and um, so there's that and moving those to, um, the other area and then raising that ten feet would, it is just not the house we bought. And I remember when we did purchase this house, we purchased it, we were between two houses. And we purchased this one specifically because of this exact view. And we feel that, um, that for, for thirty-five years, it has remained at a certain height. And I know my time is done and I'll wrap it up. It's remained at a certain height and that's the height that we have always had the understanding that it would remain. Um, otherwise we have, you know, had a, you know, sort of unofficial appraisals that show it would significantly.
But we're, we're at time right now. So.
Yes. Just decrease the value of the house and that's something we're concerned about.
Great. Thanks very much. Anyone else on Zoom?
I see another hand raised on Zoom.
Great. Um, we will bring back the applicant. Um, if, uh, he or any member of the staff would like to address, um, you have five minutes.
For questions or just to speak again?
Uh, we'll open it if we have questions, but if you, if you have anything to, um,
Yeah.
address, we're happy to, otherwise.
But I'd say is, it mainly, I, I said it before. I mean, it, in an ideal world, yeah, you could do an addition that has zero impact on the neighbors. Um, in this case, it's really just not feasible. Uh, for a number of reasons, one, just the, the size of the property is not that big. Um, the other, there's not really other areas of the property where you can expand. Uh, like I said, it's, it's eight foot ceilings already and it's a flat roof, the only house in the neighborhood that is like that. Um, you know, a, a room of the, the, the combined sort of living room, kitchen, um, dining room area would feel like a cave, you know, it's sort of an expansive room would feel like a cave with eight foot ceilings. And, um, and I fully understand and appreciate everyone's, everyone's view issues and have have tried to minimize that as much as possible. And actually to that point, we're, we're gonna be taking down a tree on the sort of, uh, uh, nor, uh, south, yeah, east side of the property that will, um, it actually expand some parts of, uh, of the views as well. So it's not all the negative impact on views with the, um, with the roof going up. And, and yeah, to, to the point of, I specifically kind of tried to tie it to where the solar panels are right now anyway, because I've been very cognizant of trying to have as minimal an impact on the, uh, the neighbors as possible.
The solar panels right now, if I'm facing the building from Tiburon Boulevard, they're on the left-hand side.
They're, they're straight across.
Straight across.
Yeah.
How high above the roof are they right now?
They're two, when they were first installed, they were three feet.
And now they're at two feet?
Two feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I noticed the right side setback, um, the proposed, you're about thirteen and a half feet. Um, can you just give a little bit of context as to why or what challenges there were kind of adding the, um, the square footage towards that, that side instead of towards Rock Hill?
What, the, it's a hill. It's gigantic. In order to do that, we have to start breaking the house up or take a bunch of hill down and put in a huge retaining wall. And if you, one of the conditions or one of the, um, um, variances are so some mention of it, uh, forty-two inch retaining wall on, on the, um, on the submission documents that we were already putting in a retaining wall on that side to, to take that building, to move it over a little bit already. So in order to move that thing farther, we're, we're talking eight, nine, 10, 11 foot retaining wall.
Okay, that's in between your house and seven, 10?
Seven.
Okay.
There's a, there should be a survey in there. You can see the gradient lines.
Okay, I'll pick it up. It's, uh, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we'll bring it back to the board. Um, thanks very much. You can.
Thank you.
Uh, who? Who'd like to hear off?
I can start. I went by the house, uh, a couple of times and I met with the neighbor across the street at seven hundred and five, I think it's Hawthorne, seven oh five. Um, I appreciate that change is difficult and living thirty-five years in a place with an existing view is, um, hard to, um, it, it's hard to have change happen. Um, when I was up there at the entry and in the, um, the owner of seven oh five was gracious enough to invite me in and I looked through the windows in the living room and the bedroom and the office. And there is a beautiful view across the bay to Sausalito and there is only a slight infraction on the bottom, in my opinion. I've got pictures if you guys want to see. Um, so I, I don't have an issue with that. It, it feels very, very minor to me, although it is a change. I think it is a, um, that house needs a renovation. I think that's a great idea. Um, I think that there's a couple of things here. For the houses up the street, um, the zoomed in photo is misleading because it shows as if the only view is this one part. So I think it's really important to frankly dismiss the zoomed in picture.
Sorry, I, I, I missed which, which house?
This one here.
This, yeah, but this is accurate. And then that is just zoomed in right there as if that's the only view and it's not. It's right there. Um, so while again, I appreciate people not wanting any view to change at all, that, that does not, it doesn't. Yeah, it, it doesn't remove water view, um, at that corner. And I can support that addition, the way it is designed. Um, what I do think is excessive are the skylights. There's a couple of things. Solar panels need clearance around them. So to propose to put a lot of skylights up there with solar panels isn't gonna work. And I don't think it's gonna be challenging. And while I appreciate wanting extra light, I think thirteen is, is excessive. And I think that could be pared down. Um, I agree with wanting to push up the ceiling on the main space. I think that's reasonable. And, um, I think that's it for now. Uh, oh, and I support the fence. I have no problem with the fence. It dips down there. I've driven by there. I've, my kids went to St. Hillary's, so I went around there all the time. And I don't see any problem and any, um, detrimental aspect to having a little bit higher fence. I think it's a smart idea.
Especially with the, the signal light there. It really does help to calm it down. Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Anyone, uh, next?
I guess one thing I, I do hate to see views lost. I, I think it is a smaller proportion when you see, like I said, when you see a, the, the full range of the view, but it's still bothersome to lose that. I think the other thing that needs a lot of attention are solar panels. I, I know that we don't, um, make final decisions on those, but using the, you know, the west slope of the roof, uh, newer solar panels that have less height. I think those are things are significant because, uh, already you discussed, uh, having a originally three foot height solar panels and now they're two, two feet. They're, they're certainly more, they're available and they're even uh, lower. And I think that that has to take precedence of the footprint of where you use those over your skylights. Because that, that additional two feet loss for your neighbors is a big deal. And, uh, I would, you know, strongly, um, advise that. Um, if there was any. Um, if there was any way to modify that corner. Um, I I assume that you've already attacked that, but uh, that would be my own, my final comment. I'm sorry to see um, the the additional width in that area. I understand that you now that you can't go further back and because of the rock bed that's on the other side. And I don't think you can change the height, I I mean, that's a, you know, that that is what it is. You have to have more height than the eight foot ceiling on a remodel. So it, um, so otherwise, I I think there's been a lot of thought put into it, but I uh, I guess I'm still thinking about that corner.
And I I forgot to add the tree also, the owner at seven oh five Hawthorne had mentioned wanting that tree to be removed. And um, had that it it is huge and there's a lot of bushes around it too. So if that's the tree that's being removed, that sounds like that would be good news for the neighbor.
Hmm, you know, a corner we're talking about is this, is it this one?
It's over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what that that's what was bothering the neighbor, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you go ahead.
Um. I think I moved in around twenty twelve two, I remember that house and watching that fence go about to go. And then come back up for 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 over a decade, so I I know that that fence very, very, very well. Um, I think it will improve everyone's property value to actually get that renovated. I think that's, it's actually going to boost property value. Um, I did visit both houses, actually. I wasn't able to get into one of the houses, um, but I did go up to the driveway and I tried calling many times, but I couldn't get in touch with anybody. I, I think these are really tiny changes, I mean, it's it's a constrained lot and I think they're really thoughtful. I mean, they're not asking for much and these are, these are minuscule little changes. And I do think it's in the grand scheme of things, I mean, I think the loss tiny bit, it's a tiny little bit. It's not like it's taking out like an entire chunk of like Mount Tam or like taking out the entire Golden Gate Bridge or the entire lagoon. Or the uh, or the bay, it's just a tiny little sliver. And I do think it's what they're gonna do to the property and the surrounding vegetation, it's actually gonna improve the views. So I don't think these, this is a very big ask. I think these are tiny little mo- tiny little um, movements. And and yes, you know, three feet into that way, but where else can you, where else are you gonna move? It's, I think they were very, very modest, so, yeah.
Uh, sorry, you said you visited, uh, which which properties did you visit?
I visited the one that was catty corner, the brand new one, there are two, there there's one on the bottom and then there's one on the top.
Hmm.
I visited those two properties and there's also one across the street and they weren't home. But I just snuck up at the driveway and just tried to try to look at what I could. Um, but I have to say, the one above, yeah, I mean. It's gonna be a change, but no one's entitled to keep, no one buys forever. They buy for for right now, to be honest. It is, it is, it's it's to say that you, if if you buy a house and you don't have a claim on every single property around you to say, you have to be the same. Like that's, that's not what your property value is based on. So I I I, you, I mean, it's a taking, if you, if you say you can't develop anything around me because I bought this thirty years ago, I I think that's a taking. It's a financial taking of somebody else's right to build, they could go up to thirty feet, they could. I mean, that's what, that's, it's a tiny lot and they could go up to thirty feet, but they're not, so that's how I see it, yeah.
Yeah, but they, but they couldn't go up thirty feet, but so I'm saying what you're saying.
Zone, zone wise, but not.
Yeah, 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 and they they knew that and so they 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 could have pushed it up even higher, but and they could have had a pitched roof. But they just, they kept it pretty, pretty quiet, this this renovation is pretty quiet.
Mm hmm.
Um, I did visit um, six ninety nine, six ninety nine, um, seven to five and and three Rock Hill. Um, so 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 uh, from all the vantage points, I think it's a theme of the evening, uh, whereas it's like, you know, bumping things out in angles. And you know, it's this, it's a sliding scale of, you know, allowing the applicant. You know, develop the property, which they're certainly entitled to do and um, and then trying to minimize the impact as much as possible. And these are the hard ones. Um, I, I agree from uphill. Um, I think the skylights are uh, may pose an issue. But to, we should discuss, I think, a little bit more thought on that with like, again, the solar panels and again, how to how to mitigate that. Um, uh, I think, I think for the for the new house at six ninety nine. The, I don't think the height is is the issue, I I think it is again, that. It's a pretty tight view corridor of open space, you know, you look through to the water and you look through. You know, to to, I guess it's Sausalito, um, and you know, you do kind of trim off like forty per- forty percent, thirty percent. From my, from the pictures that I took.
Mm hmm, okay.
Uh, which I'll, I'm happy to show, where, did you go into the house?
I did not go in the house, I parked right there and I kind of walked around.
Concrete.
Yeah, and I kind of looked and so, because I was trying to find every, yeah.
This is like from a not zoom like standing, you know, kind of. Cause it's tight, it's a tight corridor. And. There's, there's an impact, I think it's, there's an undeniable impact, the question is, what is there to do about it, if anything, right?
Yeah.
And I can't, I can't see it.
Oh, so this is the one, I have the second picture and the thing about this video, so this is obviously right up at the window. So look at the photos from that, this is what's being taken, so it's that little, so it's already got a bush like the prom- the pro- Very view is that, because it's the water, so this kind of pushes right out.
Yeah, but you're saying that but the view throughout and their view from the house is this, you know.
That's the corner, that's the corner, so as you shift your angle.
Can you just remind them that?
Your angle pushes.
We need to show it to you, yes, can?
Yeah, I mean, can, if you can share any photos you're looking at.
It's the second one.
To, okay, so it it's not your personal photo.
No.
They are personal photos, but they're.
Oh, this one is the late mail, second one, okay.
I'll send it.
So just send that so we make it available to the public.
Um. So as you, that's the very corner where there's, as you move towards in the more in the middle of the room. Because of the way the house is oriented and the walls, your view corridor, I mean, it changes, right?
It changes.
It changes, I agree, I agree, so um, all that's to say is.
I, the thing about the way I look at this one. Um, and again, we all love our views, I mean, we we certainly would not approve a project that proposed to eradicate the view, right? Um, the house is already there and in the foreground, it's not, um, it's not creating. It's not just all of a sudden putting a new big addition, like, you know, this brand new huge volume in this one main view. Which is what we've dealt with many times before. It's kind of growing toward that bush that's already there blocking. So for me, when I look at that, from this neighbor's house. The predominant view is in between the existing foliage and it doesn't affect that. It's still between the existing foliage.
Who's net, wouldn't it, what neighbor are you talking about?
Uh, this, the Hawthorne, yeah, Hawthorne, the six ninety nine.
You think that that's the view?
That's, that is the principal view to me.
Yeah.
Is down the street to the water.
But that's outside their home, this is the view inside their home.
How is that a, what's this reflection then?
You're you're standing outside the home and I'm just saying, there is a, there's a different factor of how the.
But it's blocking, but it's.
You're standing outside this home, this is from inside the home and I think there's a different impact when you.
The the tier is, it's blocking a little bit of that hill, it's not blocking the water though, the water is still the water.
So I don't know, that blocks thirty percent of the view from that home.
That's just in one moment though, that's in one moment of one place in one area. And so you have to take the totality of, of the entire.
And that's.
The totality of the entire, um, the the entire of the space.
This corner, correct?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Uh, yes. But then the question is posed of, okay. And this is where I think our job is very hard is um. This is what the neighbor loses at six ninety nine. What does the applicant lose if you bring it, reduce the the width of the house, right?
So I was, it doesn't, does it need to be the entire width? Can can there be something about this corner? So I was actually looking at this plan here, Phoebe, and I was like wondering, could could that dining space? Like, let's say the kitchen does stay out here and we just push just that dining space so the cabinets kind of stay in that line. And then you could just shift that one corner to the left, yeah, to the left, it's.
Oh, I don't see a dimension on that.
I know, that's the thing, I can't, I can't tell, but I I assume that the counters are two twenty four inches in depth, right? So that's like two feet, so just taking this block and just.
Shifting it.
Yeah.
But then you're gonna lose part of that, which probably.
Or you just.
Shorting.
Yeah, you're shorting a little bit of the deck, but.
Snip it, you just go like.
Nip that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I don't know how lo- let's, oh, well, here, I can do this, two, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. So that's probably about fifteen feet wide, which would be fifteen feet long for the dining area.
Just thinking.
Although there's, this dining room.
What if it's just shifted like that?
Yeah.
Just that, so then that is.
They could, they could, they'd have that prerogative.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's a, that's already a cozy little deck facing the view, so.
Footprint of the house?
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Just.
Just to the corner, so it goes like this.
I mean, maybe it would just be here, yeah.
Uh, maybe, maybe I'll bring it back for a second, um, because we're we're solutioning right now and this is where I get nervous. When we start solutioning, I I think the question is, do we feel that? There is, there is an impact that we think could be mitigated. And you had provide some relief to the neighbors at six ninety nine and likely up the hill. Through some minor pulling in of that.
That one corner.
Corner, and if so, I mean, I think.
I think, I I think the impact is fairly mitigate mitigated as it is. I I could get behind it just the way it is. But if you guys feel that that needs to happen, I think that that is a reasonable move to remove. That little bit of addition that's pushing out toward the bush, you know, but.
It's an extra cost, it's gonna be an extra cost, but I think, but I think the long, I think, I think it, I think it could help.
No, I think it's worth.
I think it's worth exploring and seeing if there's just one little tiny little move that they can just sort of shift that over. I I'm okay with the height, to be honest, I'm okay with the height. And and I think if we just move that that X X, X Y axis in that direction a little bit, I think there's one move. And I think it'd be, I think we can all get.
That would, and and it would improve, it would improve the neighbor's view for sure.
And so I'm having, trying to find the, the fence, the nine foot, is there landscaping?
It's because, it's because it's going down here, it's going.
No, 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 I know, but is it, I I'm saying, is there a landscape plan anywhere, like, I I just kind of want to know.
Site plan? Like this.
Some of the site plan, yeah.
Because again, then also it's just like.
It's right here, wait, wait, that's something, that's a setback.
You, are you looking for a plan of it?
I just kind of want to understand the vegetation, like, are, is it just gonna be now this solid, I I saw the the fence, like, the.
There's not much room, there's nothing.
Planning on it, because it's a.
Yeah, 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 there's, that's that, that is, you know, yeah.
There's a multi-trunked pomegranate there.
Ooh.
Okay, alright. So, uh, I think we'd be looking for a motion to continue, uh, to address that.
Yeah.
Continue or just say remove two feet off the corner and conditionally approve it or no, is that not, is that not an option? Or?
Yeah, let's, let's see how it looks, because, because it could, it could, it could kind of go in a bunch of different directions. But I think that the the um, just so that the applicant is clear, I think we should say it's like the northwest corner. Is it the northwest kind of?
It seems, I I mean, the north arrow was a little.
Then to.
Explore looking at it, moving it to the south by a couple of feet.
I just.
Somehow dealing with that corner, moving it to the south, pushing it away somehow.
Yeah, I think they have our.
Yeah, just. Yeah, just take that whole thing and shift it a little bit, yeah.
Find what trees are going and make sure that you, is that added?
Yeah, it would be really, it would be really helpful to see a a better landscaping plan with with like the.
Removal part of it is.
With with the, yeah, a planting plan with also like the the plan of the fencing on the on site plan, that would be really helpful. And uh, maybe a section, a section.
And how, how do you guys feel about the skylights?
Yes, reduce the skylights, um, I think in half.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I think so. The number of skylights.
It also.
It's gonna be bad to maintain too.
Skylights, I'm, I could be wrong, but there's a clearance from a skylight and it would make it very difficult to get the number of solar panels on there.
Well, I think the solar panels would be over here.
Yeah. I think the majority of the skylights.
This, this guy's, this, uh, the solar panels right now are on this face right here and the skylights, there's a a huge cluster around this area.
I, okay. I thought the solar panels are going on the lower.
And also just, it's uphill, it's up Rock Hill Drive, I think it's skylights, right?
The skylights are here right now.
One Tiburon.
No, no, the.
Kind of all over the place.
The roof slope from that, from that.
Oh, it's pretty flat, it's flat, it's essentially flat, it's like, yeah, but I think the skylights are here.
It really doesn't matter which side you put the solar panels on.
No, it does, because the slope here is gonna cast an incredible shadow, so I think it's better to actually put it on this, they're gonna put it on around here anyway.
But they're putting it on the lower roof.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the lower roof, this is on the.
Which is over here.
I don't know, I, I feel like, I feel like there's an opportunity to consolidate and simplify the skylights, it's, it's, it's.
Just, yeah, like hallway grate offices, yeah, there's a couple of rooms with windows on two sides.
Yeah.
You know, they're on the shady side, but they're still gonna be looking out at greenery, just feels like thirteen's little.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so a motion to continue to a, uh, what's the, um, is there a?
The next meeting is scheduled for December fourth and we would have to have materials and the staff report published next week, so that's probably not gonna happen. Um, the meeting following, we have not confirmed a quorum yet, so I think it's a date uncertain.
Oh, oh, it was a January date, right?
Is there, um, are they running up against any, what, okay, okay, great. So we'll look for a motion to continue to.
A move to continue to, date uncertain.
Second?
A second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, uh, the motion passes four to zero, uh, that is the last uh, item on the docket, we are adjourned. Have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.